While JB's handing those out, I'll call the meeting after order. It's the joint special meeting of the Select Board, the Zoning Administrator, Planning Commission, Development Review Board in Plano. I want to thank you, everyone, for coming. Certainly, in my time here on the board, this is the first time for something like this. It's really come out of the...I was hoping to get the board, really, to consensus on some subdivision regulations. The Planning Commission has been working on them for a considerable time. They came to us roughly, maybe six weeks ago, six, eight weeks ago, looking for Select Board approval of those. And at that time, we had...there was one person from the public, Dave Russo. Jonathan was here. And through the discussion, it really became clear to me that there was not a...at the time, certainly consensus, even Jonathan, who was proposing the regulations, was hesitant on whether we needed them or not. So that question came up, do we need regulations? Dave posed a number of good questions. Just if we put these regulations in place, does the DRB have the wherewithal and all the things that they need to make these decisions? And so there was some confusion there. So I thought it best if we got everyone together, all the parties, the parties that make the laws, the rules, the parties that are trying to enforce them and interpret them. If we got everyone together, I think maybe we can have a consensus and move forward that it's best for everyone to tap into. So I'd start with, I think, the Planning Commission would be the first to kind of explain what they're proposing, why they're proposing, or why we're even working on subdivision regulations. Karen, Jonathan?
So we have, as we said, been looking at these for a couple of years now. And we adopted, just to give you a little bit of chronology, we adopted the municipal plan that was approved at the Regional Commission. And the next stop, after adopting your municipal plan and getting it approved, is to review your zoning regulations and determine what needs to be changed so that the two are consistent with each other going forward. And we say a lot in the municipal plan about smart growth, about sustaining our pattern of compact development in village centers that are surrounded by rural countryside, which is also a goal of the state that's been in place for some time. So subdivision regulations give towns the capacity and the authority to look at things like when there's a parcel of land being divided into multiple lots, to look at things like what's the size of the lots? How are they...how close are any structures to each other? What's the erosion, the roads, the septic, the stormwater management? What are...put all those things into a plan as to how it's going to look when you actually start building? And how do all those lots relate to each other? We looked at subdivision regulations from a bunch of different towns. We decided to go slow and be more conservative than what we were proposing. So what that really means, at least as I am understanding it, is that we, if you've got three or fewer lots that are being divided, that that goes through the regular process now. The zoning administrator would approve that kind of a proposal, as is the case now. If it's four or more lots, the Development Review Board would take a look at the application and would evaluate it for consistency with the standards that are set up in the subdivision regulations. And they would make a determination about whether it should be approved, or the plan should be amended, or it should be denied. So that's really bare bones what subdivision regulations are about. We are one of the few towns in the area that doesn't have subdivision regulations. We are a town that is seeing some new development on our road, House Road. We've got three houses in the last two years, which is actually almost stunning, if you think about House Road. But there is development happening. There are a lot of large parcels for sale in Moretown right now. And we think it would be helpful to be prepared in the eventuality that anybody does come in with a significant proposal for development here.
Jonathan, did you want to?
Well, I'm going to get ahead of the conversation. But Mike, I'm not against this. I'm not clear on what it is. And if it's significant, as Karen ended talking about, it seems like Act 250 steps in if it's more than 10 acres, if it's more than 10 lots being created. A lot of what we're talking about here is development. And it's not clear to me how interchangeable these terms are, because we're not talking about development, we're talking about subdivision. You can subdivide a lot without developing it, and you can develop property without subdividing it. So it's not clear to me where all this fits. One of the things that is a factor in this is that without subdivision regs, as we are now, we're a one-acre town. Is that right?
For purposes of commercial development.
For commercial development.
Jurisdiction.
Right. Act 250 would step in in one acre. But this is commercial development. In Moretown, we have a commercial district that's pretty full. There's maybe two lots I can think of that could be developed on the Route 2 corridor there, which is our commercial district. I don't know if subdivision would be a factor there. There's pretty small fields across there from the Boy Scout place. I don't know how many times you could subdivide that before you start getting into lots about the size of this room. So, I mean, we're really talking about subdivision here, not development. And in this case, it's commercial development when Act 250 gets involved. I don't know how much of that goes on. If it's going to go on to an ag rez district, then you'd be having Act 250, or I guess there'd be some kind of conditional use review that would have to happen anyway. So again, I'm not speaking against this. I just don't understand why we need this. And that's what I'm hearing about, to try and hear what everybody else has to say. I'm very interested to hear what DRB has to say about it. Can you guys deal with this kind of thing?
Yes, well, JB or John, whoever wants to go first on zoning, and then DRB?
Well, I'll speak to a couple of points. You know, I was on the Planning Commission a long time ago, and I remember twice we, you know, moved towards subdivision regulations. And we did surveys at Town and Eton. And there was pretty strong support in the town to have subdivision regulations. I think in the idea of trying to control, you know, unexpected or inappropriate development. You know, today, I have mixed feelings about it. I think I'm kind of like Jonathan. I'm not sure what is the best path forward. You know, Jonathan talked about a one-acre town, but for Act 250, the subdivision trigger is six, because we don't have subdivision regulations.
Six, six parcels, right?
Six parts.
Six lots.
Six lots. If you create six lots within a five-year window, I think. And it's just within Moretown, or is it within District 5 jurisdiction?
It's within five years, within five miles of any concerned piece of property. So one individual, if he controls land anywhere within five miles of his...
Five miles of the neighborhood.
But also within town, we didn't know. So if I did three lots over in Jones Brook, and then I did three lots at Moretown Common, we got six?
Yeah.
Okay. So, I mean, I...you know, the point is, a large, significant development is going to trigger Act 250. And the Act 250 commissions with their professional staff, and they have additional criteria that they look at that typically we would not, like archaeological sites, and certainly delineation of wetlands and things like that. So, you know, the question kind of is, are we seeing, you know, as the Planning Commission is the zoning administrator, and I read with interest JB's memo, because he talked about a number of small subdivisions that he's approved, and he has some concerns about that, because he had no authority to address the roadways that were being created within the subdivision, or stormwater runoff, and that there may have been some issues that have developed as a developer, you know, implemented that subdivision. You know, to some extent, if you're a purchaser of one of those lots, I think you need to do your due diligence. So, and I think the other, you know, direction, the, you know, as the Development Review Board, we do not have any professional staff. You know, we know something about things from our different individual experiences, but in terms of reviewing and approving this stormwater plan, you know, I don't really, you know, I'm not an engineer. And I think the other, it's funny how things have changed, but, you know, 20, 25 years ago, we were worried about the school and whether we were going to, you know, had capacity to take all of the kids that might want to attend there, and there was an expense associated with that. But now, we have the statewide education tax, so all the money goes to the state, and what people pay is really governed by the state. And if there's a concern, do we have enough children to keep the school open? And so when there's new homes that are going up off House Road, and in, you know, Moretown, where the Gallagher Acres development is being built out, I mean, maybe that's a good thing. The town should welcome that and not add additional hurdles and expenses to people that are trying to create lots. Because it's, as we all know, it's extremely expensive to build, and the land and the permitting expenses are a big piece of it. So it's kind of what, what does the town want going forward is part of the question.
Now, that point was brought up. I think we all agree that the town, we would welcome homes being built and new families coming in. In addition to that, and it was Carl Wimble's comments, he was the one public person that attended, and he talked about, as a town person, being able to sell this land, being, you know, a farmer, a past farmer, you know, he doesn't have 401Ks. That's his 401K. So he feels like he's being kind of restricted on when he can cash that in, if you will, if we were to go with subdivisions. So that was, that's a concern almost to your point as well, as far as limiting people's ability to build. JB?
Oh, just to that point, as I mentioned before, this, these regulations or anything similar that's relatively bare bone would not affect Carl Wimble or your usual mom-and-pop one-lot subdivision here or there. It's really more geared towards a higher density of development, whether it be three, four, or five lots, something like that. And if somebody's going to go out and develop those lots, I think they should have prepared beforehand, including, you know, for whether it's stormwater or roads, and have to, you know, if you're going to be carving off four lots to stay out, the effort should be put in upfront to a certain degree. Whereas Carl, you know, he peels off a lot here and there, and this wouldn't be any different. He wouldn't, as Ed mentioned, he might have to put a couple more arrows in the site plant and maybe spend another five or 10 minutes in that respect. But as far as those one-lot subdivision, carving off a lot here and there, those really would not be affected.
Would it not though jump to Act 250? Is it bigger than six lots? Is that what we said that would?
Yeah.
Well, ten lots, commercial one, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I think that would be the change. Well, and I'm a little bit gray on this, but if we had subdivision regulations, instead of being a six-lot subdivision county, you'd come to 10. But apparently, there's an option within Act 250 that you can elect to remain a one-acre town for commercial development and a six-lot town for residential development.
Yeah.
And the commercial piece of it's a big one, I can only think.
And that was my concern, the view of the commercial project. This is a list of the towns. By the way, only half the towns in Vermont have subdivision regs, according to A and R. So everybody's doing it, not everybody, it's about half the towns. 131 to 131, actually, split even. And then a few of those towns remain one-acre towns, even though they have subdivision. So places like Benson, Brandon, I know Waterbury did.
Do you have to petition to be a one-acre town, or is it just an application?
The Act 250 board recognizes it, so I'm not sure how you get them to recognize it.
I think you notify them that you're an area one-acre town.
Yeah.
So they are, it's just a notification?
Yeah.
They retain them, right? Actually, even if you're a 10-acre town, it says they retain the right to claim jurisdiction on a project, according to this, so. But the commercial review, that was my concern on the DRB, is 10 acres or less versus one acre. Most commercial properties in Moretown are 10 acres or less. So almost every development or redevelopment of a commercial property that we adopted has come to the DRB. As Johnson, we don't have the staffing to handle that, or probably the expertise. You know, and I'm just thinking of the landfill, the review that was done on that, just at the DRB level. It wasn't even the additional criteria that would have been required. So, you know, suppose they, five years from now, just come back, or any of the, you know, the junkyard there, I think, is being sold or was for sale. That were to come in, any of the, at the Hannon Home Center, any of that development, you know, that could certainly come before the board is...
Right.
And skipping Act 250, you, they have the, Johnson, they have the resources. Plus, I think for the applicant, probably a commercial applicant, I'd be more nervous talking to the DRB of unknown folks than I would known knowledge in the district commission that I've been before. And you know the people, and you know their decisions, and they have a track record, you know what they want to see versus a board of public, you may not know what you're getting into, and maybe your application will go forward. And maybe it would go forward under one board, and two years later, it wouldn't, you know, it's like, maybe it's the personalities of who comes to the meeting.
But I think on the board, there's certainly, there's the expertise. I mean, I look around the US, but it's the resources that I'm concerned about. And when it's the resources, the money to pay for the experts. Go ahead.
Well, I, you know, I think, in our experience, there have been numerous situations where we've entertained applications and recognized that, you know, for one aspect or another, there have been other permitting requirements, stormwater, to name just one, or Act 250. And so as the Development Review Board, we defer, we've simply, you know, kind of tacitly recognized that whatever requirements there, that we might be concerned with, would be picked up through the state stormwater permitting process for, through Act 250. And we've sort of backed off and just left it with a condition that, you know, provided the applicant, you know, if we approved something, approved it with a condition that, you know, they get their stormwater permit or other permits as required. You know, so with the, I think, the landfill was a particular situation where I felt personally, speaking only for myself, a real need to invoke the provision in the zoning regs, which would have allowed us to retain at some cost an expert with respect to certain issues. But, you know, ultimately, they withdrew their application for the fourth sell. And, you know, I'm not sure, you know, how others felt. I kind of suspect we would not have gone that way, but there is that one provision. And then, you know, I think with respect to certainly residential, subdivisions for residential parcels, when you're subdividing more than four lots, there's a significant value in, you know, I should say prospective, you know, there's enough financial incentive to sort of accompany that subdivision to, you know, make it, to justify the additional expense of putting together a sound application under either local zoning, just as that may apply, or under prospective subdivision regulations. There's enough at stake to do it. And by not including, you know, we do have, obviously, the zoning regs as they exist now, but, you know, it's, you know, well, I haven't fully studied this or compared how certain proposals would be treated differently with the addition of subdivision regulations. But the prospect of haphazard sort of ad hoc subdivision of properties without giving enough, you know, advanced consideration of erosion mitigation during development or post-development, you know, sort of a one-shot deal. Last week, I was down at the lower end of Stevens Brook, and I, you know, we had a stretch of really beautiful dry days. I looked down the stream, and it is just muddy, running, very, very muddy. And I am concerned. The siltation of small streams and the Mad River is a concern, you know. Is it that significant? Well, it adds up. So I did some looking around, and I saw that the town was replacing a culvert on, up off, I can never remember the name of that road. Bad Hennessy.
Bad Hennessy.
At the top of Bad Hennessy Road. So, you know, it's, obviously, the culvert, there was a need identified to replace the culvert there, and, you know, the work was going on, and the beavers, beavers were agitated, and, you know, resulted in a lot of, you know, that, that's a one-day thing, hopefully. And then after replacing the culvert, the ground is stabilized. There can be lots of situations where that is not taken, you know, not dealt with in a responsible way. And, you know, we wouldn't, you know, none of us would know about it. So I don't know. Act 250 has a pretty, you know, good program for use, utilization of erosion mitigation, and, you know, it's not super effective, but that's just one issue. Anyway.
I have two questions. First of all, we're talking about subdivision regulations, and what I'm not clear on is we keep talking about commercial development and commercial properties. So am I correct in deducing here that if we have subdivision regulations, it affects properties, commercial properties, that are not being subdivided? It's just about if you have subdivision?
It makes Moretown a town where if you're proposing commercial development on three acres of land, you no longer have to get an Act 250 permit. You only have to get a local permit. So that's the impact on...
Even if you're not subdivided?
Even if you're not subdivided, it's the commercial use.
Could you defer like Waterbury did to the subdivision regulations, giving it six-lot town? Could we defer on the commercial part?
I don't know. I'm not familiar with how that works. That seems very of major concern.
I think the way that Act 250 jurisdiction works, you, you say, we want to remain a one-acre town in that, and so that applies, or so Act 250 jurisdiction continues to apply the way it does today. Or we want, we're going to be a 10-acre town, and it applies under the other provisions.
We couldn't like split the difference?
I don't, I don't think that they have that.
It seems like they did it for Waterbury for the subdivision part. I can't see why.
No, I think you can't split it. Waterbury did it for both. Waterbury's a one-acre town.
Oh, okay.
So my other question is, if I have this right, without subdivision regs, as we are now, Act 250 doesn't get involved until, how many lots are created?
Six.
Six. And if they, if we enact subdivision regs, where do they come in? 10?
10, 10 some less. We opt out.
And try to keep them coming back at six. Well, if we keep them at six, I mean, it's, I totally understand, and I'm sympathetic. I mean, I would not want to have to deal with the stuff that you guys have to deal with in terms of, you know, permitting properties, where there's a lot of expert testimony and all that has to happen. As far as like the landfill goes, they were, they were in Act 250. It's my understanding that if a property's in Act 250, it's always in Act 250. So if you get an Act 250 permit for a project, it's completed, and then 10 years or whatever later, you want to make a substantial change to that, you got to go through Act 250 for your amendment or addition, whatever it's called. Am I correct with that?
Well, I think there's a case pending right now where that is the very issue.
Is it they make a determination? Whether it's my determination or the purpose of this discussion?
Yes.
Generally true.
Okay, so in the case of the landfill, I mean, that's not your, I mean, you guys were doing it concurrently, which I found interesting, but you had Act 250 covering it as well.
You know, yeah, it was more comprehensive. Personally, I don't necessarily, I mean...
Just using this as an example.
I think, I think it was prudent for the town to be looking closely at the potential expansion of that landfill, given the statewide issue concerning, you know, the limited capacity in landfills.
I do, I do think it's kind of an unusual example, though. There's only two landfills in the state right now, and so...
One.
There...
No, one.
There's a little one in Bristol. But, but yeah, I mean, you're not going to run across one in a landfill.
But my point basically is that, I mean, for a lot of these projects, they're already in Act 250, so it doesn't matter what happens with, and this is my understanding. If I'm wrong, point it out. The other part of it is, we're only talking about, if it's three or less, and JB just writes a permit, I'm a little surprised that he can't, using his discretion, decide, well, this is more involved than I want to be ruling on. He can't bump this up to DRB or whoever, you know, and say, even though it's less than three, there's some mitigating issues here. But if it's three or less, and it's just a sign-off by the zoning administrator, and Act 250 comes in at six, we're talking four and five.
But Jonathan, I don't think it's the, it's, those developments and those lots, it's really so much the question now. It's more because of, because of the subdivisions, it kicks the commercial back to these guys. And that's what we're trying to avoid, because in all the, you know, we don't have anything over 10 acres developable for commercial lots. Everything is under 10 acres or less, so it will fall to the DRB.
But I don't get why, I don't know, hard time to explain it, but it's like, if Act 250 will deal with this, let's let them deal with it. And if these guys are not qualified...
If we have subdivision regulations, then the responsibility falls on us.
Oh, not unless we don't declare that we want to continue to be a one-acre town. See, what I, what I got interested about subdivision regulations... See, what I, what I got interested about subdivision regulations as a planning commission member was when we worked closely with JB reviewing the zoning regulations and realized that there were some gaps and he expressed that he has some difficulty, like he said in the memo that you all received, making good decisions with the current tool that he has. So we felt like the subdivision regulations was giving a tool to a municipal staff member to do his job better. And if it doesn't come at the expense of the DRB or with the commercial development side because of this option of remaining one acre, I don't really see what the risk is here. I feel like subdivision regulations enable our current staff member to do his job better and also give us this ability to integrate a little more with our road and our zoning and end up with more of a one-stop shopping place in our regulations for subdivision of any size. I mean, and it's only a start. It's a kind of a minimal start, but it's the minimum to do his job well as zoning administrator. So I feel like I needed to really listen to that as a planning commissioner.
So I wondered about the policy, so the mechanics aside, the policy decision too is this theory of clustered development, which only goes as far as the market demand for such developments, right? So you can put it everywhere in your policy, but if no one wants to buy, you know, if you have 12 acres and all the houses are in the corner, well, that's great policy. But if no one wants to buy those, that means the person developing them is not going to build them, even if we tell them, "That's what we want you to build." And he's going to say, "Well, that's fine, I'll go to wherever, build more, build more." But, you know, so, I mean, that old question, is that really what we want for Moore Town? Because by kind of gerrymandering the lots to be our vision, you drive the price up maybe. Because if there's more expense for the developer, that developer's going to want to get that investment back out of the lots. So they're not going to build smaller affordable homes, they're going to try and get their money out and get that investment, pay spend on lawyers and consultants to do the application. I mean, Terrence pointed, to make money, you've got to spend money, but you're probably not going to do that to break even. So, you know, that's sort of the policy choice that we have to think about.
So the subdivision regulations don't require clustering. What they require is a plan that shows where the lots are going to be and where the structures are going to be in relation to all the infrastructure that needs going in that kind of a development of a subdivision, if you say. And so, you know, there's still a lot of leeway for the person who's proposing the project. It doesn't dictate anything really, other than the information.
This sort of goes to Jonathan's question though. So, and then JB, I don't know if you know, but suppose one of the large timberlands is the proposals to subdivide, say it's 100 acres and they want four 25-acre lots, but not to build, but they just want to subdivide. And to access those lots, they want a road. The way I read it, they would need then a plan, a master plan, basically to, you know, draw two lines on a parcel and say, "Here's now, this was one and now it's four."
With the creation of a new road.
And with a road to access the separate parcel. Would that then be a subdivision, even though the development is planned, just the act of drawing a line on the map and putting a road in, that becomes a subdivision?
Lots, yes.
Lots, correct. So that's your question. You don't have to build a house, you have to...
Right, but if the lots are being proposed, but there's no plan to subdivide or to develop yet, I mean, you assume eventually everything's...
Well, yeah.
But, I mean, you could, I mean, there's a, one of the timber mess lots right now has just been sold and the guy's going to subdivide, but there's no, that I'm aware of, construction plan on any of the newly created, going to be built lots. There may be, there probably will be at some point, but there's three lots being created out of this and it's not clear to me whether, is that a subdivided off of the, from the 776?
They were deeded separately, so...
Okay, so it's not a subdivision.
Correct.
So, as I understand this, the original lot is not counted in the lots created. So if you have a parcel that's 100 acres and you want to subdivide off three 10-acre lots, that's a three-lot subdivision, not four. Is that, am I correct in that?
Well...
No.
A little flatter.
No, it's the wording of the law.
Most ordinances would say that's a four, you're creating four lots.
That's what I thought. If somebody corrected, that was a view.
The way this is worded?
That is the, the original lot, the lots are being...
It's not counted.
Doesn't count.
Early to retain.
Either way, this 100 acres, if you have over 100 acres, three lots, if one of them is out of the equation, then there's two. But nobody is looking to develop those lots at the, in the year term.
Right, they will subdivide them.
So in theory...
Here it says subdivision of land which results in the creation of a total of four or more lots.
Okay, so then that's included. So that would be a three-lot subdivision. If this 109 acres gets carved into three different parcels.
Total, no, I think the total is four lots.
Or more.
He just changed this.
Right. He went from three, ten.
Yeah, he was using my 100 acres. That would be a four-lot subdivision.
Yes.
Which brings up a point that whatever, if these are adopted or something like these are adopted, you know, kind of erring on the side of looking for, critically looking for ambiguities and, you know, either by defining terms or adding more specific language, it's helpful to us when applications actually come.
And that was one of the things we were hoping here as well tonight, is to try to figure that out. What is the language? Because it seems like the zoning regulations say one thing, the planning commission, you know, we're all saying, mean the same thing, but we seem to say it in different languages. And Dana was mentioning that at our previous meeting. It's hard for you guys to interpret that again. So what is the best way to get that?
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Because we're really talking about, does it make sense to have these or not? My sense is, if I read the timeline, there's going to be a public vote at the November election?
No.
No?
No.
Okay.
No, we would, if we adopt these, if the select board goes ahead and says, "All right, we want to adopt something," it would be the March town meeting is when we would have that vote.
Okay, but there would be a town vote that would decide...
The town decides.
The town decides.
The town decides.
Yeah.
But we all know that most things that are put forth at town meeting pass. So, you know, we just want to make sure that we're putting forward the best.
Yeah, and, you know, I made this statement and I think it's probably pretty accurate that I think if it goes to a town vote, there would be general support and consent for doing this, just the way Moore Town tends to vote on things.
So it sounds to me like if we adopted them, it would make JB's job easier and if we have the one acre for commercial, that would make the DRB's job easier. So it's not a win-win?
So the, so the DRB have three cases this year? That's what you looked at? Three cases?
Uh, I don't...
Three or four? I'm unclear.
It's probably, we have had about 10 to 12 applications a year. In the last two years, there's been pretty significant drop off.
And JB was saying that there was probably one additional case that you would have had to review this year, have these regulations been in place?
Actually, the last three, within the last three years, that's looking at my most recent spreadsheet, that one subdivision of the last two...
Would there just been subdivisions? What about commercial development?
Well, the bike shop.
Yes, like shots.
The bike truckers who skated.
The catering place, I mean, your... A couple.
Opposite of that is, you know, what is the problem that you're trying to address if there's not a problem now?
We're trying to be proactive. Some of us are trying to be proactive.
Well, I thought one of the arguments, just the commercial one acre aside, of if we went from Act 250, now looking at six, if we have subdivision regulations nine, then that could be maybe more of an incentive for people to come to Moore Town because in theory, our subdivision regulations aren't going to be as arduous and expensive as Act 250. So you might be able to get that window now of people coming in and developing that we wouldn't have if we didn't have the subdivision.
Just anecdotally, I know people who will not live in Duck Spray for the very reason that they don't seem to take their zoning regs and land development concerns very seriously.
So I know that's one argument, but then that doesn't help with the one acre. But that's why I was saying if we can parse that potentially, that maybe that could be something that could be advantageous to the town.
Some of this is already, if you live in the Ag Res, just one of the Ag Res that I've studied, and you want to do Sirowood shop, when I built it, I had to get conditional use permit to do it. There was no subdivision wasn't part of this, but it was commercial and Ag Res. That's still as part of the equation, whether we had zoning regs or not. So bringing in zoning regs, I mean, my thing is so minor, I don't think Act 250 would have had an interest in it, but at the same time, don't we already have...
Commercial development on more than one acre.
Sorry? Yeah. It was on one more than one acre.
If you had asked for a project for Hushy, they might have told you.
It was before the DRB, it was the zoning board of adjustment was the...
I'd have started that afterward.
Let's not go there. Can we not go there?
This is a long time ago.
I think you're safe now.
Some future title search.
It just seems like we already have a review process in place for a lot of this stuff. If it's a big thing, Act 250's going to kick in anyway, just because...
That's, that's part of the philosophical, you know, because when you look at, you know, developments and what people have to get for permits, I mean, the largest, because there's no municipal water or sewer, except near Waterbury Village, there's water, you know, largely the development of land is a function of, you know, setback distances for wastewater systems and where you put wells and, you know, that, those permitting requirements and if stormwater is triggered, you know, in my mind, in my experience in this day and age, seems to largely stop, you know, reckless development that might have happened 40 years ago. So, you know, so do we really need this? I don't know. I mean, I think it's fair that the town, there seems to be interest in it and that, you know, the voters vote on it. And if it's adopted, you know, the DRB will do what they're asked to do. You know, and on that level, I think, I don't know if we want in this meeting to talk about kind of, you know, how these standards work and, you know, can they be strengthened or approved or made clearer so that when applications come in, assuming they're adopted?
I think that would be a good idea for you guys to take home and take a look at that and then submit maybe some comments back to Cheryl or to JB, Jonathan, whoever, Karen. And then let's take, let's take a look at those, take a look at that. Maybe we can tweak what we have and, you know, really accomplish what we all want. I mean, we're all looking for the best interest of the town, for our employees, you know, for our boards. And I think with your insight from your boards' input, everyone, I think we can, you know, hopefully put something together or at least make a decision that, what, this is really not right for us, you know, and go forward. But I'd like to do that. We could, you know, take, I don't know, a couple of weeks, because we need, we do need time to learn this and such. So if you guys could take the next couple of weeks to make comments, get them to the, let's say Cheryl, that way they all come back to one central place and then she can disperse them. And that should bring us, oh, so mid-October, we can maybe get together. We don't have to get together as a group again, or we can, depending on what your feedback is, and I'll talk to everyone what they thought, or depending on what the comments are. But we can, you know, make that decision later, but I think this is a good start and we'll look forward from there.
Do you want to set a date? Do you want a month from now?
Yeah, well, a couple of weeks from now.
I guess, if, I mean, I just think if we, I mean, I was just going to make a few general comments, that this would seem as good an opportunity as any with a lot of folks present.
Sure. No, if you're prepared to do it now, I think you...
Just kind of general things. I know, I mean, it's titled Article VI. Would this would be a standalone ordinance?
No, it would be in the book.
So, I mean, we have an Article VI now.
And so Article VI would become Article VII.
Okay, or Article VIII or...
Seven.
Okay.
In the enforcement is always the last feature.
And so they would tie into all the existing definitions that are in the ordinance?
That would be the plan.
Because I noticed there weren't any definitions of things like subdivision. You know, we talked about, you know, what constitutes... Well, more like, you know, you've got three new lots and retain, or, you know, you've got one parcel and you create the three 10-acre parcels from the 100. Is that four lots or is that three lots? Which is a pretty important question. So...
Where is that defined?
Well, I think there's a definition of subdivision.
Because they're in the zoning ordinance.
But I know there's definitions in the regs, but is that one with definition? Is that defined?
Division of any parcel of land for the purposes of conveyance, transfer of ownership, lease improvement, building, development or sale whereby two or more lots, blocks or parcels are created. Term subdivision includes re-subdivision.
And I think, does land development include subdivision?
Yes, it does.
Yeah.
Yeah.
And then I think the language of the proposed subdivision regulations, Section 6.1C1A, which results in the creation of a total of three or fewer versus the language that I wrote, read off before on the very top line of the second page of this thing. You know, I think that's pretty clear.
Well, the only thing that, somebody who I respect, and I can't remember who it was. I mean, there was somebody who knew about this stuff and I said, "No, no, no, the primary lot does not count as..."
Well, yeah, but...
But that's not what this is.
You don't know. I think Phil is correct. If you have...
It would be better to spell it out yet more clearly, but I don't think it's...
One lot is split into three. Have two been created or have three been created? I think that's not clear.
Whatever you want to...
I'm not advocating for one, but just to spell it out.
Clarity, sure.
Now, just along those lines, there are developers that, by, this is the C1A, the five-year period, and they hold the land and then every five years, they carve off two lots and two lots and two lots. So that's, there's no avoiding that.
It's stealth development, because you can do it without having to trigger the five years then.
In conditional use review, what's been somewhat onerous and problematic for some applicants is making sure that all abutting property owners get notice. That's a requirement, conditional use for the applicant. Is, is that going to be a requirement for a subdivision proposal, that every abutter would get notice of the application?
I think so.
For the developer, maybe more.
Yes.
Yeah.
So that's embedded in the ordinance and would be triggered?
Yes.
Okay.
If it goes through me, if it's a two or three lot subdivision, there is no requirement in there that a butter would be notified.
But they have to put up the post.
Exactly, except absent the permit itself, which would put them unnoticed.
Okay.
So the permit's set before the permit is issued, do they have a comment period or after?
After the permit is issued and posted, there is a fifteen-day basically waiting period for people to...
To, okay.
So there is notification?
No, only if you see.
You drive by.
Only if you drive by, exactly. Unless it's, unless it goes to the DRB, in which case they would all, butters would all be notified.
I thought, I heard you say that you would notify them?
Nope. There is no, if it's reviewed administratively, then it's just like any other application, the butters don't get notified, absent the permit being posted, and that's their notice. Goes to the board, will then part of the application.
That's after it's been granted that it gets, and then there's a fifteen-day window. So if you, you don't live next door, you may never know until you see, until it's happened.
But the guy next door, he finds out at what point?
He's got fifteen days to appeal to the DRB, the John...
If he's not notified, it assumes that he's going to know somehow at some point before the fifteen days appeal period.
Well, that's really for the planning commission to think about in thinking about how these rules should work. You know, and crafting how it fits into the zoning ordinance.
And then maybe if it's merely a subdivision without any land development or site work, maybe it's, you know, prerogative of the owner to be able to do that without notifying all the neighbors. But at some point, at a point, if it's going to involve immediate construction of a road to serve both lots, that might justify wanting to let neighbors know or put, you know, be more active in notifying them, not just the permit.
A road would be developed, even if it's no houses, just the road is developed.
But once you, I have a question, once you split it up, say you split one into four, but you don't plan to do anything with it, so you don't have to go through the subdivision regulations, but then in five years you do, but aren't they separate lots at that point, so there is no subdivision regulations? Because they're separate lots?
At the time you split them up, you go through this process?
Well, that's what I'm saying, maybe you didn't...
Even if you don't build the road, the road gets approved or...
You still have to go through the process, even if you're just drawing lines on a map.
That's right. And you have to file a survey mylar within a hundred eighty days. So...
You could say, I'm not building any houses. And in year six, you have four lots and you just go apply for a single over resident.
That's what I'm saying.
Or what if they're all, what if they all butt the town highway?
Yeah, and then all, yeah, in six years, all four of them go to build houses. But then they're separate lots, even though it's technically started as a subdivision.
It's amazed me, since being on the board, at least in two instances, people did four or five lot subdivisions like twenty, twenty-five years ago, and they just drew lines on the map. And when the engineer went to try to build one of the houses, they were like, you know, "These lots make no sense based on topography and the way..." And so they had to come into the board to get an amendment to the original permit because they were so paranoid that they would, that the rules would change, the lot, minimum lot sizes would be increased. So they grandfathered themselves at significant expense.
So what the DRB sees is...
Because they had to amend the prior permit.
Okay.
We had some questions earlier about getting kicked into a major subdivision with the creation of a road and exactly what that meant. Can you talk about that a little bit?
I think Cheryl had brought something up, but, see, a road starts for us at the creation of three?
Well, no, because it was in (c)(2)A.
You would talk about it.
In (c)(2)A, it's, sort of elegantly worded it, it says, "And/or involves construction of a new road." And because of the or, basically, if you build a road, you kiss it into me. And that was my point.
So that clause involves the construction, is that the subdivision of land involves the construction of a new road? Or the creation of four lots that involves the construction of the road?
It's meant to be the subdivision itself, which is usually triggered by, you know, having three lots.
Sure, but the ambiguity that that creates, to me, is much more significant than whether or not the original lot is included in the calculation.
I think I figured we were getting that last time.
Yes, this says now, if you want to put in a road, it's a major subdivision without any splitting problem.
Well, it could be argued differently, but...
Could be clarified.
Yeah, and road is probably not a good term. It would normally be just a common driveway of some type. I mean, I think you would need to try to define it better.
Isn't it defined, the road serves two lots and, I mean, three lots or more, and a driveway can serve up to two lots?
Yes, so a road is defined as serving three or more lots.
In half, you're only creating two lots, even if you put in a road, it's not a road.
It's a shared driveway. Yeah.
So did you, I think we also heard that by taking the time to do a better job with your subdivision plan, you end up with a more saleable down the road for the developer, they have something better to work with. So, you know, there's also that value to consider. That, and then that's, that's a community service that's being promoted.
So wait, so the answer, if someone divides into four and says, "We're not going to build," and then one of those, you know, and then all four of those people...
That by itself requires subdivision approval.
Okay, but you're, but all you're approving, okay, so if it's, these subdivision regulations, if they were passed, if it's six or less, correct? So if you're dividing ones that have to go through these subdivision regulations, and they say, "We're not going to build right now," then you approve their subdivision regulations, or you approve them for a subdivision, because all they did was divide, nobody's going to build, there's no stormwater, there's no Act 250. And then in five years, all the ones that subdivided all come in, they'll be individual lots putting in building permits, correct? So they're still...
They don't have regulations they have to follow to them.
The concept of building...
Yeah, but one lot has a regulation, or all six lots together have a regulation?
If they're, if they're sold individually, maybe somebody subdivides the lots and then sells them to individual owners, I think that when that, when those individuals come in for a permit to build, they're going to get one permit for their one house. But you already had the lines drawn on the map when you went for the initial subdivision. Like, not the building envelope, but the lot lines.
So the subdivision only has to do with the lines of the land, not...
Depends what you're doing at the time that you apply for the subdivision. That's what I was reading.
You might not even build the road right then, but you would have to at least show where the road would go. Thank you.
Would you, or you ask, where's, assuming that this becomes developed, where's your road going to go?
It would have to, it would have to be included on the cycle.
But if they're all abutting a town road, then...
Then they don't need it all.
They just need a purpose. Sort of false, I mean, if, the concern is that that's not very kind of thoughtfully or well-planned to do that with the idea that when they build their houses, they're all just going to have, you know, I mean, that's sort of falls through the cracks of this kind of regulation, but, you know, can't...
Can everything, right.
So let's just make sure, I understand the concern, on A on the top of page two, it's the subdivision, the floor or more, and the and/or, what you're concerned about is, like, even if you constructed a road for a three-person subdivision, that could trigger the nature.
Yeah, or what if you just made a road for your sugar bush? Well, like, say it wasn't an ag, say it was for hunting. Because it says or, construction of a road, to me, that or makes that standalone.
Right, so we took the or out, I think that would be clearer, at least in this case.
Or if you separated those two items?
Yeah.
Into, you know, one to...
So if you own a property and you just want to create a road to access your sugar bush or whatever?
That's agriculture.
No, it's not a road, there's a definition in the ordinance in Road, page eighty-nine, that JB referred to, and it has to be for traffic that's going to serve three or more lots. So that's the...
So you get this one situation of being, say, you've had a twenty-acre vacant lot, and you decided, "I'm going to, I'm going to, I'm going to create two more parcels," so there's your three-lot subdivision, maybe still accesses off the mountain road or town road, but in going from one to three, you now have three lots and you're going to have to put a road through, that would kick into the DRB.
Otherwise JB could approve three, but in that instance, the three-lot subdivision would go to the DRB. Because there's a road, so...
But if there's road front, it's the first lot can have a curb cut, and second, the road can service the other two, and then you...
That is the zoning administrator.
Seems like there's a way around a lot of this, just by having...
Well, so much of it is a function of somebody looking at land and house sites and where the soils perk and where you can drill a well and meet the setbacks and, I mean, that's how the process works. You know, this process of, you know, taking a piece of paper and cutting a lot, it just doesn't seem to happen anymore.
There are always, you can't, I mean, you just can't have regs that... There are always going to be ways that certain people are going to find a way around. It used to be, build a road seven hundred and ninety-nine feet, and you're not in Act 250, and if it's eight hundred feet or longer, you are in Act 250. Now, that's not the case. And then there are the people who, you know, develop a network of forest roads that are built like amazingly. And, but we're just logging here until the time comes that they...
So the trees are gone, now we're putting in a house. Look at this, open lots.
Judge me there.
To get to your example, you just, I mean, one of the things that Karen's brought this up before, when you're doing like a subdivision and it happens piecemeal, some of the problems down the road, for example, you may create four lots, maybe you put in a road, maybe you don't, doesn't matter. But the first guy, after however many years, decides, "I'm going to build a house, here's my septic, here's my well, here's my driveway." The next guy comes in, he bought the lot next door, all of a sudden, your well and your septic is compromising the only place where he can put his well.
That's not a town, that's and/or in the wastewater.
But if it's three or less, it doesn't, they don't come in until this guy's got a problem, because you could, I mean, you're not equipped to know where it perks, where it's a well is possible, those kinds of things.
But the state handles all those permitting requirements.
Right, but the subdivision happens five, seven years prior.
So if you're a developer or a subdivider, and you actually want to sell building lots that will have places for a septic system and a replacement area and meet the isolation distance for a drilled well, you know, you've got to...
Can you subdivide your property and not sell? I mean, you've got...
Yes.
Yeah.
Right, so you could, if there is, subdivide it, and this doesn't come up until parts of it have been developed, in which case, I mean, obviously, part of it is fire beware, but a lot of it is, you know, what are you preventing from happening in terms of a problem?
Fire beware at some point.
So I'm still kind of interested in something that somebody brought up, which was, so you have one piece of property, you can put in, not a road, but a driveway, because it doesn't go to multiple houses, and it can go all over the place. Then you can subdivide, and you have effectively a road going to every property, but it's already done.
Yeah.
So...
I mean, I never know any of these coming up. You're absolutely right.
I mean, one of the issues that makes it difficult to subdivide land is when the subdivision regulations require mapping of wetlands. I don't see any requirement in the application that, that an applicant would be required to do that. Even though there's... Well, the state has independent regulations, but if they're, I mean, if somebody submits an application, there's no requirement that they delineate.
Not, not enough.
It's like just three things, the, on page six, just the three requirements. Critical wildlife, water quality. I guess water quality, you know, how would we know if they didn't? And how would we know if they didn't, without hiring an engineer of our own?
Or requiring that they have it, you know, it would be embedded in the regulation that they would have it reviewed by an ecologist or qualified professional. And that's what happens, I think, in Act 250 is they get delineated. And then in terms of approving roads, are there, do we have standards and swift or traveled way or...
Not in the definition today.
Not in here, but in...
In town, in town ordinance, yeah, this is mainly discussing drivers.
But you get a road permit from the select...
Exactly, and that, and we...
The road will have curb cuts.
Yes, the curb cuts.
You don't look at the, with the road or any house as an emergency vehicle.
That's all of you.
What's, what's, what I have to work with, yeah.
I mean, I think just as a, you know, a board member that might look at applications, if we have to evaluate...
Have the same right. My wife says, "You've got to change that right, it's so trial."
No, I mean, I just, you know, if we're supposed to evaluate these things, we need, it's helpful to have some standards to say, "Okay, your road is," you know, "if there's three houses that are going to access this road, the traveled way has to be so wide, the subbase needs to be so deep," you know, I mean...
Gosh, we review applications for people off town roads, off class four roads, you know, and...
All we say is, "You've got to keep it open so a fire truck..."
So the ambulance can kill them. People go, "Well, we don't care about that." But they may not own it forever.
No, they don't care until they need the ambulance.
And also, that would help us, because what happens is, if anyone end up coming back to us and, "Hey, can you put, you know, loads of this down, or, you know, we need gravel, we need a new culvert," and it eventually falls back on us. And we, so, those are the type of things, and we always have said in the past, you know, "Well, we should, we should make John put restriction on this, if they're going to build a house, they need to maintain," you know...
We do that.
Class four.
I mean, we have sort of...
I think recently, I think we sort of done that.
Yeah, we don't, yeah.
Like, you've got to maintain it, and the town's not accepting responsibility. Haven't we included that kind of thing?
I mean, I think we've made general statements that you have to build a road that a fire truck or emergency vehicles can access all season.
These guys put standards on that size road, it needs to be, and such, it would be a lot easier to use.
If there's going to be seven houses using a road, it needs to be a little wider than if there's two, or things like that would be helpful.
Right, and that's one of the reasons that we learned that subdivision regulations can really integrate, they can take that road reg, reinforce it in one place where it comes up in a context. So it seems like a good, a good tool to reinforce from a couple of different directions in one place.
Wide enough for two UPS trucks traveling in on fifty miles per hour.
Yeah, it does seem, now, once you're very specific, there are more and more failure modes you can find. Yeah, it does seem, now, once you're very specific, there are more and more failure modes you can find.
Perfection is the enemy of the good.
So JB, when you, when the regulation is put down, like, if someone wants to develop on a class four road, does anybody go and check it out after it's all done, that it's actually done? Is there an enforcement part of this, or we just make rules and hope that everybody's gonna comply?
Well, I, I have also drafted a certificate of occupancy, so the answer, the short answer is no. Without, without this town issuing certificates of occupancy, there is no follow-up mechanism unless I took it upon myself to go out there and make sure it was done according to plan.
Or somebody complains.
Or somebody complains, but with a CO, you have, somebody attested to the fact that it was built according to plans, and usually, before I would issue a CO, I'd go out to visit a property unless it's.
Don't the listers, I mean, they're building permits, and then don't they go out and just check to be sure?
They do.
No, I mean, they're just, they're doing it for valuation purposes.
They'll go out and, and, hasn't happened in, 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 in more town, but it's been my experience elsewhere that the listers are usually on it, and would tell me if something's not in the midst. But again, that's the advantage of having a certificate of occupancy, is you have that follow-up enforcement mechanism.
But even with a certificate of occupancy, after a year or two, if they don't maintain the road, then it's back to the way it was, and, you know, I just think that we have a lot of regulations that nobody enforces, so we can, we can make all the regulations we want, but nobody enforces them. Like, I thought it.
John?
I'm just agreeing, I'm agreeing.
All right, so I think we've had, John, did you have any more? So we've, I think we've had a good discussion here. I would still like to see you guys take a look through what's being proposed. I know the zoning has, but do you have, are there any more instances where you see where language could be improved? Or there's, you know, a little cloudiness in the explanations, if you could get that back to.
Oh, thanks, Chloe, thanks. And what troubles me is, I mean, we've got, we've got fifteen people in this room right now, who would probably look at this more than anybody else in town. And when this thing goes to a vote in March or whenever, you know, you're expecting, well, let the voters decide. The voters aren't deciding, they just vote yes. And not one of them can answer any of the questions that were posed tonight. We can't even answer half the questions that were proposed tonight. So, I just find this whole thing, it's kind of like, we're doing this as a field.
I know, this is an excellent discussion.
We're starting someplace, the DRB's gonna have an experience with this, you're gonna have an experience with this, and it will be changed, and it will be tweaked. It'll get better.
So, so make sure I see any process. You're gonna have DRB look at it, provide comments to the planning commission and the sweatboard of what suggested either revisions to this, or their position on whether it's even, even needed or warranted?
They can, if they want their opinion on whether they, you know, they can send that as well. But I'd just like to see more what they, what they feel the document itself, how that could be approved, improved or not. We've had, I have a pretty good idea of what people are feeling. I mean, I think people want to do the best for the town. They don't wanna impose unnecessary requirements or costs, but we need to balance that with, you know, a healthy environment going forward. And so, with what you guys put together, and you've done a great job, I know you've put a ton of work into it, but if you can add what they come up with, and then we as a board, I think, can make a decision, you know, present this to the town or not.
And I think, I'm sorry to interrupt. No, I, I just, I think it, you know, it's not really the development review board's place to, or at least the way I view it for myself, to say whether or not this is something that should be put in place. I'd say it's, that's what the planning commission has done.
Right, that's why I said on a second note, you could give us your opinion on that.
Or not, you don't have to, whatever, whatever comments you wanna provide.
But more looking at the substance of the document, what works, what doesn't. And then we can make that decision. But I really appreciate getting your input, your actual taste on it.
I think their, your point of view on this is the most important part of this, because like a lot of the laws that we get, they're created by people, have no clue what the hell they're making laws about, they're just making laws, that's what we do. And you guys, and you guys know what works and what doesn't work, at least for you and your experience. And I'm very interested to hear about that, cause to me, it's like, I don't know what this is, and I feel very uncomfortable saying, all right, we're gonna have this, order this, and then we'll see what happens, you know?
Let me put it another way, whatever they put, you wanna provide, it will work out. Tell you what to do. Thinking about this, talking about what we said, you know, something that, that lays out specific standards, and just doesn't talk about generalities, to give us both the applicant, and then the reviewing board guidance as to what they have to do to get approval, you know, what's fair and reasonable, and, that's really helpful, as opposed to just, you know, generalities of you should consider landscaping and screening.
And one other thing that I was thinking about, as we've been talking about roads, is in terms of stormwater management. And roads become very, very important, so we should pay attention to that. We just got a grant to work on Lynch Hill, do some work on that. And the main reason that we chose that for the grant is because stormwater was affecting a class three road. So, we were able to get money to work on a class four road because it helped the class three road. So, keep that in mind, too.
Related to that, what about clearing on slopes? Is there anything we need to do to address that?
You mean development on over thirty percent grade or something like that?
I don't know what appropriate grade would be, but anywhere that it would cause erosion or.
Yes, we have, so, per my memo, one of the more important things I find in these subdivision regulations is the reference in the regulations to section four point one five, which was recently, which was recently adopted a few years ago, and slipped into the regulations, and that addresses stormwater management and development on steep slopes. As far as clearing on slopes, I mean, clearing in and of itself is not development, but it's very hairy. So that, so that is my reference in there. And right now, run-of-the-mill zoning permit, you know, I, I can't use section four point one five. I mean, I can provide, you know, comments and say, "Use salt fencing and that," but it's not necessarily binding. Whereas, section four point one five is applicable for conditional use review, and if these were to be adopted, it would, it would be ref, it would be included in part of the subdivision.
What about clearing without subdivision?
There's no. Yeah, just checking with the forest.
There's a lot of towns asking that question, especially as we've been studying stormwater, and we've been studying, just, well, also land cover, like, you know, that change over time, because there's been a lot of infomercial clearing, you know, that you do, and it adds up.
Yeah, exactly. Stare and I both sit on a test with friends of the Man River, and it's amazing how much deforestation's occurred over the last ten, fifteen years.
All right, well, thank you again. So if you guys, John, Eric, your board date, everyone can get their comments in over the next couple of weeks, or changes that would help.
Would it be helpful to have a date? I know for me deadlines. To, to do the task.
Yeah, why don't we, October first. No, no, for the comments to get to you guys.
Yeah, they came in today's mail.
Yeah, that gives them a couple of weeks, gives us a couple of weeks if we have questions. Does that work for everyone?
In general.
What was that, October one?
The first, yeah.
That would tie in, all those things mentioned in charge, you know, incorporating part of the zoning regulations.
I would also be interested in.
All right, if there aren't any other further questions, concerns, thank you very much, we appreciate it.
Thanks, Eric.